Did you just grab a whole bunch of stuff? Oh, there he is, even has lemonade.
I had to ask because I was kind of like, okay, something suspicious is... Not from where it's from.
It's who?
Did you apply Chick-fil-A for everybody or what's the story here?
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the August 26th work session for the Board of Education of District 49. Time is 6:32, starting just a few minutes late because we had a meet and greet with our new administrators. Then we had a reposition, so we're on to our discussion items. Can I have a relearn, return to learn implementation update from Mr. Hiltz and Mr. Almeida?
Good evening, Mr. Graham, Board, members of the community. As you know, we are continuing to actively monitor and assess literally daily our plans for return to learn. When we last spoke about this in public, just as a refresher, we looked at some of the county data. I actually projected some of that county data, and I won't, I won't take you through that tonight. But I will reference the three, the three key measures that we're watching are, the number one measure is the case rate for 100,000 for a 14-day average. We have seen that measure continue to decline. It's now into the mid 80s, down from a high of 157. So it's absolutely moving in the right direction. The rate of decline has slowed a little bit, in part because as more people are going back to school, they're being more attentive to their symptoms, which is generating a few more countywide incidences. But that, that number is, is absolutely going in the right direction. It broke into the, the high band, so we're now not in the very high band, but we're in the high band. We will be in the high band until that number gets below 50. Right now, we're projecting that that number will get, on, on current trajectories, even with some, some slowdown, we're projecting that we'll be into the medium band in mid-September. And I'm, I'm using a broad term there. Mid-September might be anywhere between, you know, about the 10th and the, the 20th, in, in that range. So that's a key indicator that, that county public, population health is getting better. The second key indicator we look at is the test positivity and, and kind of pairing that with test result turnaround. Right now, our test positivity number has gotten a lot better. We want to see that rate under 5%. It's currently under 4% and has been trending lower. That's a great sign because it means that we've got, we've got appropriate testing capacity, but that the people who are being tested are not positive. So that is a good sign, and along with that, with increased capacity in the county, particularly with a new facility coming on at the Citadel Mall that offers free, no appointment, no insurance needed, no, no medical referral needed testing. So that's a little, my little commercial here to the public. If you have any reason that you might want to get a test, you can do that at the Citadel Mall. That, that doubled our county testing capacity, about doubled it. And so we have, we have seen turnaround times on test results come back down under a two-day average. If you go get, get your test and it doesn't come back in two days, don't, don't complain to me because that average includes hospital-based testing that comes back sometimes same day. But on average, we want to see that number under two, and so the fact that it's come back under two is a really good indicator. The third key public health indicator is that we're, our, our community has enough hospital capacity, including intensive care capacity, to manage not only the current level, a case rate in the community, but even if that case rate were, were worse than it is right now, we have capacity for any kind of a surge or, or moderate uptick. So pop, population health numbers from El Paso County are either already good capacity and test rate, or they are better and trending toward good. That's the case rate number. So that's the, the, the county data. The other data we're looking at very carefully, sent you an update about this on Monday, is our in-district school health data. And what we're looking for here are two things. We want to see less virus coming into our schools, and that is what we are seeing. But we also want to see that, that if we have an infection that, that comes into our school because somebody was, was infected in the community, we want to contain that spread. So this past week, we did not do as well. Little bit of that is just due, due to the nature of, of household relationships and our, our penchant for, for hiring people who live in the same household or, or share a family. So we had actually two clusters that involved household members where our numbers were, were elevated this past week. So we care about the total number of cases, we care about the number of clusters of cases, and we care about the size of the cluster. And this is all information that we will be providing out to our community in, in a series of discussions over the next four or five days. I'll explain that a little bit later, but we're looking at that in-district health statistic. We are also very attentive to in-district transmission. If I come to work and I contract COVID-19 at work, that's transmission. We want to keep transmission at zero. It is currently zero. We have no indication that anyone has transmitted this infection while at work or at school. We want to keep it there, and we're depending heavily on our safety system to keep it there. If somebody, if we have a transmission happen at school, then that reveals a vulnerability somewhere in our safety system. Either, either incomplete compliance or some aspect of it was, was ineffective in protecting us from transmission. So related to that, we're also attentive to whether or not we get an outbreak. An outbreak is defined by state and then county guidance. It involves more than two, two or more people from different households in the same setting, school or office, et cetera. And we have not had a defined outbreak, but we are attentive and working with our partners. If we see outbreaks or transmission, that is a, a red flag, and so we're going to pay careful attention to that. So the two big data sets, county health and district health. Right now, county health is in a good direction or at good levels already. District health, we're, we're pleased that we've had zero transmissions, zero outbreaks, but we're concerned that we did have two larger clusters that elevated our numbers in the past week, so we're paying attention to that. So that's what we're paying attention to. Now, if those numbers stabilize or continue in a positive direction, we believe those indicators are supportive of a return to in-person learning as we've already described it for pre-K2 on September 8th, and as we've already described and planned for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students on the following Monday, September 14th. What we are proposing tonight, and I'm going to do this verbally, and then you'll, you, you've got a document, and then we'll share that document with the community. What we are proposing tonight, conditioned on those two data points continuing to be positive or stable in the good direction, we are proposing to begin to return secondary students, that's middle and high school students, on the same day that we are planning to return 3rd through 5th, so that would be September 14th. But because there are still, there is still evidence in the community of infle, of infection flowing into our schools, we want to be very deliberate and purposeful about that return. So a proposal, and it is a proposal, not a decision or, or even a, a full plan yet, because we want to get staff and family and student input on this proposal. But the proposal that we are offering to discuss with you tonight and take your guidance on is that we would bring back our secondary students on a, at the middle school on a 50% basis. Middle schools have natural cohorts. They're divided into three grade levels, and then within each of those grade levels, they're divided into teens. So it's relatively an easier numerical and logistical challenge to divide middle schools into cohorts. So even at a 50% attendance rate, we would still expect that our, our actual attendance number would be in the 30% to 40% range. And we believe we can manage to keep cohorts small so that in case of an infection, we can contain quickly. We can trace-track and contain quickly. That is not as true for high schools, and so our proposal is that high schools would return to learn on the same day, September 14th, but at a 25% rate. And what that means is that we would divide our high school population on an alphabetical basis, and I'll explain why in a second, into four cohorts, and that those cohorts would attend on separate days of the week. The reason we're proposing to divide by alphabet versus dividing by grade level is because if you divide by grade level, then you get big, big blossoms of students in a class on a particular day because lots of freshmen take Algebra I and lots of, lots of juniors take physics. And so by dividing by alpha, we spread out the impact on any one day. We keep our cohorts small, and we're able to be purposeful, deliberate, and gradual about our return to learn. It also has the advantage, dividing by alpha, that if a family's children have the same last name, they would have the option, if they need to, and, and have, already have a, a right to ride a bus. They could ride on the same bus if that bus runs the correct route, et cetera, because they're, they're in that same day schedule. We also heard, and this is a little bit older data from our families, that having their children be in school or out of school on the same days was helpful. That, that's not a universal truth. For some families, it'd probably be better to spread them out. But, but that's the reason we're dividing based on alpha. We are trying to divide our middle school and high schools on the same alpha so that we get consistency, again, for ridership and for family schedules. So those are the broad outlines of, of a proposal. Right now, we think that, that the current trajectory and levels of, of health data support this proposal, and we know we can support it from an operational side. So I'm going to, I'm going to yield to Mr. Almeida, and then I'll come back and talk to you about how we want to solicit staff, student, and family or parent input to this proposal.
I have nothing significant to add beyond some of the earlier updates we've given from the operations desk. We are postured, and we're feeling pretty comfortable as we're starting to move towards school, having our students back in school and greater numbers. We're seeing the posture for supply status being, being pretty solid, and continues to get better every single day. And that, and when I'm talking about supply status, I'm talking about everything from our cleaning supplies to hand sanitizer, to PPE equipment, personal protective equipment, all the way around the board. We're, we're in much better shape than we were just a month ago, and we're going to continue to, to stay on top of that. We will, we will watch, once we open up our schools, the pace and the rate at which we're going through supplies, and stay on top of that and continue to project so that we're, we're purchasing the things that we need on time. The other area of facilities, air turnover is, has been increased across our buildings. So we have more turnover with our air handling systems in the buildings to, to, to continue to have fresher air inside of buildings. We also have procedures and processes and guidelines that are in place and continue to get revised and, and improved as we move closer to school and having, having more students inside of the schools. Just having the staff in the buildings for the last few weeks, or the last couple of weeks, has gained a tremendous amount of lessons learned from us in terms of how we need to handle operations within the schools, and we'll continue to refine those as we move forward. Peter already mentioned we're solid on transportation. You're about to get a, we have no concerns in that lane, and nothing significant to add beyond what we updated the board on before with regard to a, a lower capacity on the buses as we continue to keep our students spaced out on, on bus and transportation routes. For nutrition services, you're about to receive an update here when we get done from the Nutrition Services Director, but let us suffice to say that we're postured as we move forward. And for all the points that Peter just raised for the concept that he is bringing up for discussion tonight, from an operations standpoint, we're feeling pretty comfortable that that is very supportable and something that will help us ease back into operations at, at a good rate that'll allow us to see ourselves and understand where adjustments need to be made.
Thanks, Mr. Almeida. One of the things I, I really appreciate about Mr. Almeida's leadership is he made it very clear, as, as did the leaders in the operations department, that we get the program right, and then we will support it. So we're, we're making decisions that we believe are educationally prioritized and, and educationally sound, and then we're doing everything we can to support that programming and those decisions from the, the operations and from the business office as well. So we want to hear your questions, recommendations, suggestions, and directions tonight. That's what a work session is for. Our intent would be to synthesize any, any significant suggestions or direction that you make tonight into our proposal, and then to take that proposal to our workforce, our, our parents and our students beginning tomorrow with a thought exchange for middle school and a second thought exchange for high school. We know that starting slow will, will hit the sweet spot for some members of our community. We also know that some will want us to start faster or start immediately, and some won't want us to start at all. We believe the model we're proposing is the right middle path, but we will continue to offer a full e-learning option. We will continue to support on-campus, small groups, special populations, and, and targeted instruction. And then as we bring our secondary, older students back onto our campuses, we will watch very carefully what impact that might have, particularly on the district health data that I shared earlier. Do we see clusters? Do we possibly see transmission or outbreaks at our schools? Because those are the things that we want to manage as well as we can. Our goal is to come back and stay back. We come back too fast, we're not going to stay back. And we're already seeing that regionally with schools that, that opened and had cases day one. Day one, week one, and had to close or had to quarantine cohorts of students. So we're, we're trying to be deliberate and purposeful, and we would appreciate questions that you might have, recommendations. Would certainly invite you to, to consider the student board perspective because this has been a topic of discussion a couple of times, and we, we will answer anything that, that you have for us.
And if I may start off, I'd like to acknowledge our Student Board of Representative from Sand Creek High School, Delia Chase. And Delia, I'd like to ask you, what are your thoughts on that plan?
So personally, I want to go back to school as soon as I can, but I understand that it's not safe. I think it's too soon to send them back on September 14th purely because we don't have the data from sending elementary or middle school back, so we're not exactly sure how cohorts are going to work. Also, I think high school is a completely different ballgame. Like, a lot of us are out in the community a lot more, a lot of us have jobs. So we're going to, it's not just like other classmates to worry about. We're also bringing it home to our parents who also have it, which every kid will have that situation. But we're also bringing it to the community and to our jobs. I also think it's, I like the alphabet a lot more than grade level personally because I know as a ju, like, even when I was a freshman, I was taking classes that weren't just primarily freshmen. So to have all of us in that room, that would be a little stressful for someone who was nervous about having, like, contracting COVID. I also just, in my opinion, it's too early, but I understand the reasoning, and I appreciate that we're going at 25% instead of 50, since high schoolers are harder to keep in cohorts. I, last time I spoke to the rest of the student board, we also all mostly agreed that we want to go back when it's, like, super safe, and if that's not, so I think collecting the data from Evan, like, elementary schools and middle schools first will better help us bring the high schoolers back.
Great, thank you for your comments. So now I'll open it up to the board. We've heard from the administration, we've heard from students. And got any questions from Mr. Hiltz, Chief Operations Officer?
The, the microphones are already set to on.
What do you do? Just talk.
So you just got to leave the button to the top. You don't have to touch it anymore, and you just got to make sure you don't mutter like I do.
So, Mr. Hiltz, I, I get the feeling that, so my brain would want to phase, would want to plan a phase two, but it sounds like you'll wait and see how this phase goes before you think about the next step. Is that kind of, could you sort of describe what might be next?
Thank you, Mr. Koster. So obviously, I, I wasn't speaking from a document, but we did share a document with you, and we would, we would anticipate refining that document before sharing it with the community tomorrow. In that document, we indicated our, the model that we're proposing would create two-week, two-week units, if you will. So we could conceivably operate at 25% for two, or four, or six weeks. And the, the idea is, and I'll speak specifically about high school, that we would, we would run for at least one two-week cycle, more likely two two-week cycles, so run for four weeks. It happens to be that if we start on the 14th and we run two two-week cycles at 25%, then we get to fall break. And that's intentional. And so while I, while I agree with Delia, and she represents the student board position well, they, they frankly would probably counsel us to start back after the quarter or semester even, right? They're super concerned about safety. While I understand that, the, the thought from the, the principals and zone leaders that helped develop that timeline is that we're still giving students and families that want to have a full online option, that option, and we're, we're working very deliberately and purposefully on a cycle that could ramp up just before fall break to 50%, but more likely after fall break would ramp to 50% with our goal of being on a trajectory that gets us safely back to full enrollment by the end of the semester. If, if we could get full enrollment for even a couple of weeks of December, that would be a big win. So our idea is to time these, these increases before breaks so that if we have an outbreak or if we have a cluster, we've got a two-week, 14-day quarantine built in that we call fall break. And then we've got another one-week quarantine that we call Thanksgiving break, and then another two weeks at Christmas. So we're trying to take advantage of those natural calendar breaks for the timing. But our goal absolutely would be to get back to full schedule, full, full cohort, in-person learning in January. But we got to go slow to go fast, to borrow a NASCAR phrase.
No, I like it. I like the, the natural break transition point. That's, that's smart thinking.
Any other questions from the Board of Education? Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, last night at the DAC meeting, there was a question raised about the COVID funds being potentially tapped for student protect, personal protective equipment. And I, we've, it's never been discussed really, and so I, I had, I had told the person who asked the question that maybe, maybe Brett could speak to, to that if, if you've got any, any input on what's going on with all that.
So using COVID funds for personal protective equipment for students, not for any other, like, technology or anything like that? That's, that's the question?
Right. Yeah, just apparently some of the other districts are doing some of that.
Right. So, so no, we, the main, they are the main... We are doing things in classrooms, you know, and in buildings as, as the, as the school leaders are, are ideating and requesting, you know, in terms of plexiglass and things like that. We are supplying the, the building custodial staff with the, the things that they need to maintain the cleanliness of the building. But in terms of the, the mask, for instance, for students, that has, that has been considered to be part of basically dress code. And therefore, part of, of the responsibility of, of the students, of the families to come with that equipment as they would with their regular clothing.
Okay. Then the other question I had, Peter, the back-to-school on the 8th for the pre-K through 2, it sounds like you're, in, in your document that you sent, that, it sounds like that's very much still on track in your mind?
Yes. So remember that the, the timing complexity is we, we want to give both as much time as possible to gather data, but, so that's, that pushes us later on the calendar, but as much time as possible to, to adjust family schedules and plans, which pushes us earlier on the calendar. I would say, as we sit here right now, we're go, we're go-for-launch with pre-K2 on September 8th. It would take a, a, a pretty massive reversal of current trajectory. And I mean reversal, not even a plateau. We, we could, we would open, if the current numbers stabilize and plateau where they are, we, we would open. It would take a, a decline in, in community health for us to, to even consider coming back off of that.
Got it. And then the third question I have is, how, how is e-learning going this time around? I mean, we had a lot more time to plan for it, we had a lot more experience going into it. Do we have any meaningful metrics? I mean, is the, is the hardware and software platforms all kind of operating the way they're supposed to? And are the kids showing up, and are the teachers feeling like they've got what they need? How's all that going?
We strongly prefer to answer questions like that with structured data, and we don't have that structured data yet because we didn't survey at the end of Week 1. It, it was our pattern during E49 in the spring to survey every couple of weeks, although we did have three where we went Friday, Friday, Friday on, on purpose. We will be doing that, so I'll have a better answer for you. But anecdotally, as I am talking and, and visiting schools and talking with principals and, and even seeing what our, what our own teachers are writing and saying, anecdotally... own teachers are writing and saying, anecdotally, this is a much more robust and structured experience of e-learning than what we had in the spring. That does not, I do not negate or minimize people that are struggling, that are having connectivity issues, or even device issues, those are real, but I think they are less prominent than they were in the spring. We have more students and more teachers operating at a higher level than we had in the spring. So overall, my report, although it is not a fully informed report, but my report is, we made good on the summer of time to prepare.
Any further questions? So just for those out in TV land, I have been assured that this meeting is being livestreamed, so those who are having difficulty connecting, you can go to d49.org/boe, and you'll find a livestream link and a Facebook link. So, if there are no further questions?
Well, is somebody responding on Facebook? Because there's, I guess there's a-
Yes, we have.
Okay.
And any further questions from Mr. Hiltz? Okay, so at this time, you are asking for consensus to move forward with the plan, or just continue with the path you have just spoken of?
Yeah, so to be clear, we're not asking the board to approve, we're not asking for you to move this for action, because it's not the board's rhythm, or frankly, schedule to approve or disapprove. What we were hoping for is if there were elements of this plan that the board either opposed or disagreed with, or needed additional clarification, that we would hear that, so that we could incorporate those ideas into the proposal that we're going to take to the community tomorrow.
Okay, great.
We would anticipate coming out of this first community engagement with a sharper, clearer, more final proposal, which we would of course inform the board about, and then inform the community about.
Great. So if there's no further questions, then I think that the board does not have any issue, I guess, with the plan that you had just talked about, and we look forward to seeing further results. Thank you.
Thank you. I know a lot of effort goes into, not only for the three chiefs coming up with these plans, but, you know, our staff at the headquarters and at the school levels. It's a lot of hard work, and we thank you for putting that work in to basically keep our kids safe, educate our kids, and get them where they need to be, which is eventually into a fully open school, and in the safest way possible. Now we're on to operation performance reports, nutrition services.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Monica Dinesunderson, the Director of Nutrition Services, and I'm here to give you the update of how we ended the 2019-20 school year. So Dave, are you changing? Thank you. Just some background for the new board members of the nutrition program. It is a federally regulated program, the highest regulated program under USDA, and these are just some of the key points behind it. It was set up to be a special revenue fund, so basically an enterprise, our business, excuse me, inside the school district. Like I said before, it was established by USDA, and it was established to operate as a not-for-profit, with a limited fund balance of retained earnings of up to three months. We are self-funded, and we do not utilize any general fund support in a normal school year. Okay, some of the rules of accounting for the department, and this is general federal regulations. So food service fund shall operate as nearly as practical as a not-for-profit basis. Its net catch resources must be limited to three months' average expenditures based upon a nine-month operating year. Next, please. And then child nutrition reauthorization. This program is reauthorized by the full Congress every five years. Currently, we're running on an extension, because Washington DC's been a little bit too busy the past few years to think about child reauthorization. CNR does establish the meal patterns and all other program regulations attached to it. And Congress occasionally is looking at CNR, but to be honest, right now, COVID's taken over. But Congress is also looking at extra funding to be added, and some of the COVID bills coming out to help the child nutrition programs. Okay, department statistics. We have staff of about 100 members. We do serve at 25 sites. We're in almost all of our charter schools. We prepare meals at 22 schools, and we transport meals to three schools. This was a participation trend for this year compared to last year, and I did it up until March, because everything stopped cold on March 13th. So as you can see, between 2018-19 to 1920, we were trending ahead with meal participation. So we were looking really good on March 13th to actually exceed our revenue budget. And this is just another way to look at it, where we were for our breakfasts at the end of every year, you know, for five-year scope, where we ended at that point in March with the amount of meals we served for breakfast. The following slide is just on lunch, so it's showing you the same type of data points that we really had a significant hit there with not having a normal school year. Dave? Thank you. So this was an interesting data point for me to look at this year, our estimated lost revenue opportunity. So on average daily participation for us, you can see that 526 pre-qualified students would get breakfast, 119 reduced qualified students, and 236, for a total of, on an average, for breakfast, 881 breakfasts every day when we were in school. On lunch, you can see those numbers, total, almost 6,000 lunches every day. When I look at this, I look at this past the revenue opportunity, and I look at the children who had meals with us, who did not get that meal, who lost that safety net. So there's two folds here. There's the fold of the revenue, and there's the fold of this is a safety net for our families. A la carte, that's just a side thing we do too for kids in the secondary, so that's 2,000, almost $3,000 a day, average revenue. We were closed for 39 days, you take the numbers on down, so our lost revenue opportunity was over $600,000. That's a substantial amount for a budget to be impacted. But with that, and I'm sorry, this keeps sliding under my chin here, with that said, March 13th, the school district went out on spring break, March 16th, leadership had a meeting, March 17th, we opened up our first emergency feeding site. So we turned basically the ship around on a dime. A week later, we opened two additional sites. These sites were approved on a waiver, they're not normally approved sites, we only have one approved site for summer feeding, and that's what the government gave everybody permission to do, is operate the basic summer feeding program in this emergency, but they extended it and gave us waivers to open two additional sites, Falcon Elementary and Odyssey. With that said, we continued to provide meals for our families, and these meals were a breakfast and a lunch in a bag every day for the people who came to get them. So, we did that through July 17th. With that, from March 17th to July 17th, we provided over 46,000 breakfasts and over 46,000 lunches to our families who came to the three sites to pick them up. Now that did bring us in some federal reimbursement money of the amount of $312,000. Next slide, please. So year-end results, well, as bleak as I originally thought back in March, I thought we were pretty much dead in the water, but year-end results, our revenue, 3.3, well, over 3.3 million, our expenses, 3.5 million, so we did take a net loss of $188,000. Now, with that said, and Brett, well, correct me if I get the acronym wrong, with SSR money, we were able to maintain the nutrition staff and pay them during this time when we really weren't operating. This year, we had to go into our fund balance with that 188 loss. There is a reason why we try and keep a fund balance too, because of years like this. So we're not able to contribute anything to the general fund like we normally do, or what we have done in the past, and we can only do that when we have over three months' retained earnings, and then the district can only take a certain percentage on indirect costs. So, we can't contribute this year, but as you can see in the past, some years, we were able to contribute up to $100,000. Next slide, please, Dave? So this is a number I think it's important for everybody to see. In this district, our current free and reduced percentages is 25.41%. So that means over a quarter of our students live in households with food insecurities. And that's pretty important, because these kids depend on the meals they get at schools, thus shown by the numbers from our emergency feeding. So here's the breakdown for your information, and this was a sweet note, right there. We had some very sweet families that came and saw us every day in the emergency feeding, and this was just a sweet note a little boy wrote, thanking the staff who was out there giving him meals every day, and thought that they needed a banana back for all the work they did. So with that, I conclude, and turn it over for questions.
Thank you. Any board members?
I'd just like to, I think you and your staff did a great job in March gearing up, and thank you.
Yeah, the way in which you kept things going for everybody was, yeah, you did turn on a dime, and we knew it was going to be a loss, and, you know, it's kind of hard to still be expected to feed needy families, or families that do need that help and support, yet at the same time, then we had a loss, and we had to absorb that loss in some sort of way, and I appreciate the way in which you're still managing and informing us that we are aware of that. Still grateful the government helped us out in that way too, because imagine if they didn't, and we still were expected to feed our young people. Certainly want to say thanks to the staff that were out there day after day. Sometimes they'd have lots of cars, and sometimes they'd have, you know, just a trickle, but it was still important for them, their visibility and presence to be there, so tremendous thank you to them. It's okay, it's okay a few years to not have anything come back, there's not that expectation. This isn't a money-making deal, this is a taking care of kids and feeding people operation, and that's what's most important to me.
Yeah, I would say as a nonprofit, that's almost the expectation, isn't it? So, I'm a little thrown off though by your numbers, so you said 25%, but a few charts back, it looks more like the average daily petition rate was much higher. Is that only a COVID metric there? Where you show breakfast free, 526, reduce 119, paid 236, that's way more than 25%. So is that a COVID metric?
Yeah, when I say 25%, that's 25% of the entire student body, whose families have applied for free or reduced meals. So that's what that number is. Now, the kids who actually participate with the meal program, they have to purchase the meal-
Oh, I understand now.
-for those numbers to count.
In other words, not everybody in school actually buys lunch.
Right, especially like the high schoolers.
Gotcha, I understand. It's not cool to buy lunch when you're in high school.
Especially if you own a car.
May I just jump in too? I have to admit, sometimes as a stay-at-home dad, my pride gets hurt when my kids go, "No, I'm going to have school lunch today." But that's also a sign of that you are preparing wonderfully nutritious and delicious meals that kids want to eat, and so I do appreciate that. It's kind of, it's kind of cool, it's a feather in your cap, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh god, yes, very true.
So nutrition is one of our most highly regulated fields when it comes to education, and Monica keeps us out of trouble, keeps the kids fed, her and her team, I should say, because we cannot say enough, you know, the compliments and the goodwill that you guys create by taking care of kids and making sure they're fed. We all know, you know, whether we're parents, or educators, or board members, that a hungry kid doesn't concentrate in class, and so you guys reaching out, making sure that there was food available for those families that wanted to participate in March and throughout the COVID season, definitely was a benefit to our community. So on behalf of our community, I want to say thank you to you and your team, and all those that participated in preparing all those lunches, and that you continue to do that during the school seasons as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to professional learning update.
I'm Dr. Kathy Pickering, Coordinator of Professional Learning, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to share an update with you this evening. Tonight I'll share with you three major areas of focus for our department. Our first major project is upgrading the AHA Network, which is the professional learning hub for District 49 and the surrounding area. We're also continuing to enhance our professional learning opportunities for our educational support personnel. And finally, it's always our goal to provide incredibly relevant learning opportunities, so I'll share with you how we are supporting e-learning and social emotional learning. We know that this has been a trying time for both staff and students, and we're committed to supporting both those areas. We've been working over the past few months to upgrade AHA Network. We had outgrown our old registration system, which was called Go Sign Me Up, and we're thrilled to make the transition to Power School Unified Talent. We launched Power School Unified Talent over the summer, and we've had the registration system live for over a month now, and we're very happy with this switch. We're currently in the process of working with HR to load certification and licensure data, and are starting to use the system as well for salary advancements. And then we also spent quite a bit of time this summer refreshing our website with a new look and new navigation, and we're excited about the changes that we have made. So we're already seeing a lot of advantages to our new system. First of all, it has a user-friendly and intuitive dashboard, and it's also fully integrated with Schoology. So now, when a participant goes into the system, and they have a course that is an online course offered through Schoology, which many of our courses are, they can simply click on the name of the course, and it will take them directly into Schoology, so we don't have to share access codes anymore, and it just makes it much more streamlined and easier. The reporting system also has a lot more capabilities, and so we're very excited about the data that we now have access to, so that we can make improvements to our programming. We also have just now one system for in-district and out-of-district credit. In the past, we had to have two different systems, and so we heard that that was a challenge for staff to navigate through, so we're excited to now have everything in just this one new system, Power School. And then, this system also has the capability of pushing out courses to specific schools, zones, workforce segments, and other demographics, and so we don't have to continue to share links and have these internal and external courses. And then finally, our transition is less impactful for staff than our last transition, because we're able to transfer all of their transcript data into the new system, so it's streamlined for them. Our other area of focus this year is, as I mentioned, professional learning opportunities for educational support personnel. And one of our big initiatives with this is what we call our COTOP program, which stands for Comprehensive Training Opportunities for Pair Professionals. We have had great success with this program over the last year, and we've had over 120 pair professionals who have taken our academies so far. We've also worked with instructors to design other courses that have been specifically designed for our ESP staff. For instance, in the spring, we launched Love and Logic for ESPs. We also knew that the spring was a difficult time for staff, and so we also coordinated a self-care during COVID for ESPs that was facilitated by Dr. Tina Bogren, who's a self-care for educators guru, which was very well-received by our participants. Our COTOP program- Our COTOP program, go ahead, David, was started actually last year as a partnership with the Paraprofessional Research and Resource Center at the University of Colorado Denver. And we started by training facilitators that were provided with all of the materials that they needed to turn around and train paraprofessionals within their buildings. Go ahead, David. So we leveraged, we also leveraged, so not only were these facilitators available for their buildings, but we also leveraged several of them to use, to provide district-level courses throughout the year. We started with offering these COTOP academies in person, but quickly shifted to an online platform when we launched E49 in the spring. And that's what we really love about this program, is not only are buildings equipped with everything that they need to provide relevant and job-embedded professional learning for their paras that is unique to the needs of their staff, but we also have opportunities to bring paraprofessionals together on a district level to be able to share ideas and strategies with one another from across the district. So these are all of the paraprofessional academies that are available to us, and you can see color-coded what we've already offered in person and what we've offered virtually. So we've offered about half of what we have available to us already within the span of a year, and our goal is to continue to develop and add new academies each semester and eventually have all of these available for our paraprofessionals in the near future. Another opportunity for our educational support personnel was the Summit Scholarship. And this Summit Scholarship was made possible with a partnership with Western Governors University. This was available to all ESP staff who were interested in pursuing their teaching credentials, and we had an open application process in the spring. And three of our wonderful staff members were awarded full-ride scholarships to earn their bachelor's degrees in education. And so our awardees were Nicole Cronie from Woodman Hills Elementary, Michelle Braves from Horizon Middle School, and Natasha Trapp from Vista Ridge High School. So this was an opportunity for us to grow our own, and we're really excited to be on this journey with them. They just began their first semester, and they're very excited about the coursework that they're engaged in. And then, as I mentioned, it's always our goal to provide relevant learning opportunities, and the need for additional support with e-learning and social emotional learning became evident this spring. When we shifted to E49, we quickly developed six new courses to support our teachers. We already had some courses on Schoology and blended learning and the Google Suite, but we worked with instructors to add new courses throughout the spring to further develop our teachers and their skill set. We also knew that these were trying times for educators, so we did launch additional self-care during COVID sessions, and we're continuing that focus into this year as well. This year, on August 3rd, we launched 40 new courses for staff, including 13 courses on e-learning. And we're also coordinating with Dr. Boyd in Community Care, Rachel Dorr in Wellness, and Leah Holland with our Bright to offer sessions on trauma-informed care, behavioral support, self-care, and social emotional learning. So we'll continue to partner together to offer increased opportunities in those areas throughout the year. So those are our major initiatives, and at this time, I'd like to answer any questions that you might have.
Go right ahead if you have questions, Kevin.
The, did you have numbers in terms of amount of participants, or is there an expectation that all district employees would participate in different types of AHA Network courses that are offered online?
Yes, so we do track all of those numbers. We really want to provide a wealth of opportunities for our staff, and so we have a wide variety of courses available right now. We are looking closely at that data, and with our new system, it really gives us much more capabilities to kind of narrow in on which ones are the ones that our staff are finding relevant and which ones are ones that we're not really getting the participation in. And so we're continuing to monitor that and offer new sessions and continue to add new courses.
Any further questions, comments? I'm a firm believer that professional education is an important tool, not only for the workforce, but for the individual. And it looks like that you're bringing that program to the levels I expect it to be as a board member, but also as a taxpayer. And I like, I just like seeing that the program is growing, that people are becoming more involved, that they're getting training, the education, the opportunities that we've been seeking. What is, what are we doing to, one thing that always comes up in the CAX and our end-of-year surveys and stuff is more training and resources for general education teachers to better teach special education students. Can you just, you know, just real quick, tell me what we're doing in that arena?
Sure, we're actually partnering quite a bit with our special education team. This year, they put on a peak performance camp that was held at the end of July, right before staff came back, and we had very high participation in that. Lots of general education teachers, there were over 40 different sessions, and we had lots of both special education teachers and general education teachers that attended those. So we continue to partner. They're also working with us on the COTOP program that we have as well, and so that partnership continues throughout the year, and we continue to offer opportunities as the need arises.
Great, thank you.
I have just one comment I'd like to make. From my point of view, part of what our mission is as a district should be to instill a lifelong love of learning in our kids. And that is something that ultimately, I think, is more caught than taught. And I love to see that we are creating a culture of lifelong learning for our teachers as well, because that's going to be one of the keys to the kids catching it.
Absolutely, thank you.
All of our staff?
All of our staff.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Thank you so much for your update.
Thank you very much.
So Delia, anytime you do have a comment, when it's, when it's time for comment, you can, you can speak up, okay?
All right, thank you.
Don't feel like you have to wait your turn. Now, we're on to District 49 Assessment Update.
Hey, everybody. I'm Kathleen Grandis, Coordinator of Academic Performance, and I'm so glad to be here with you tonight. So each August, I come to you and I bring you the assessment scores that we have from spring of, of the year prior. And as you know, this year, we don't have assessment scores from state assessment as there was the, the public health crisis and everything. And I thought, this is a fabulous opportunity to tell you a little bit about the unsung heroes of assessment, such as classroom assessments. And so I have this image here that shows like the three different key components of student learning. And so assessment is definitely a part of that, but we know that the superstars are like the instruction, right, in the classroom, and then the standards that we teach. And so the standards are set by the Colorado Department of Education. They are the what students are going to learn. They're like our roadmap for teachers. Then we also have instruction. That's the, how students are going to learn it. Typically, you know, it's like the delivery, the delivery method of what we're going to do to get instruction to students. Right now, we're thinking a lot about remote learning or e-learning and in-person learning, but really, within any of those, there's still so many ways that teachers get learning to students or information to students in ways students that engage in it, and it really depends, too, on the students, right? And we want to make sure that's personalized to the right context. And then we have assessment, and that's how we measure the teaching. Are we teaching what we thought we were teaching? Are they learning what we thought they would learn? And is there a better way to do it? And there always is, and as educators, it's hard to sit back and go, "That was perfect," because we're always adjusting and changing to maximize learning and to make sure that it meets the needs of the students. So when we think of those three components of learning, we know we're hitting the sweet spot when we have them all aligned at that, and that we have assessment, instruction, and standards aligned. So those unsung rock stars of assessment, I think, is classroom assessment, something I don't typically come and talk with you about. So I wanted to take a minute to sing their praises for a minute. I think about classroom assessments as the Sherpas for learning. They really guide teachers to what students need, their next steps, and to really like calibrate and fine-tune learning. I don't know if you've ever sat in something where there, someone is speaking to you about something you have no context for, and it really makes learning difficult. So as teachers, we use things like, you know, questions. We use something where maybe students are typing in a chat box or writing on a whiteboard to, to just guide what we're doing as educators. Then we know that there's also, can you go back one? There's also lots of other tools teachers use, like textbooks, right? And there are assessments that come with those, and those become a little more standardized. All of our schools have great resources that are online, too, like we have Lexia or different online learning opportunities that give students little quizzes and assessments along the way. And then kind of on the farther end of that spectrum, we think about something almost like AP courses that have assessments in them. And so that also gives teachers guidance of their instruction and guides them along the way. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of assessments that we use throughout the whole district. So one is Acadiants Reading and Acadiants Math. They're written by the, created by the same researchers. When Stacy Franklin, Coordinator of Literacy, comes and talks with you, she always shares Acadiants Reading data. This data is really telling us like the lowest level of okay. It's a set of indicators that help us to know if students have the foundational skills for learning reading. And then the same thing in math. So it predicts risk for us, and when we see students who have risk, we want to jump into action. And so that's a great tool that we can leverage for student learning. Another one that our kindergarten teachers are all delving into right now is out of the kindergarten school readiness that's out of legislation. And so all kindergarten teachers use a tool. In our district, we use something called Teaching Strategies Gold, and it's just all the things any kindergarten teacher would want to know about their students within a survey, and so they find out. Do they know how to hold a pencil correctly? And can they gallop? And do they know how to share? And so there's across five domains, and of course, also in literacy and numeracy as well. And then something that I'm really excited to talk about is STAR 360. It's an assessment system that has been used some in the district, but we have an implementation this year in third through fifth grade across the whole district, and we've got a middle school using it, and some schools are using it K5. And this is a computer-adaptive, so they can take it online test that's aligned to our standards, that's really guiding instruction. It's made to guide instruction. And so it gives teachers an opportunity to give like, you know, Myon where they can have online reading. This aligns to that, and they can assign out books to go with their reading level. So, you know, we're not doing fall assessment, we didn't do state assessment in the spring, but CDE is partnering the College Board to help make up for that. So our last year's seniors are going to have an opportunity to take the SAT this fall, and then our last year's 11th graders have an opportunity to take the PSAT-NMSQT, which is the National Merit Qualifying Test. And so that's a fabulous opportunity for them to see, because it's vertically scaled, how they'll do in SAT next year, and it gives our teachers an opportunity to jump in and flex and change their instruction to meet the needs of those students. And both of those provide us opportunities to learn about demonstration and mastery for graduation. And so right now, we're still planning for the spring, and so these are the assessments that are coming up this spring. Access, which is the test for ELL students, English language learners, the Colorado Measures of Academic Success, the ALT tests that go along with that, and the college readiness tests. And I just wanted to highlight the district assessment page. It's on the district website under our services, under learning services, and then assessment. And that gives our community and families information about assessment in the district. There's a calendar that gives more granular dates than I just gave. And then also, parents can reach out to schools, and they can give them even more specific information about when assessments will occur and what assessments they give at their school. So I think that, that really assessments are like gauges that we can use to keep tabs on teaching and learning for students, as parents, as the board, as educators, to make sure that what we intend is happening, and we want to keep that plane in the air. And we know there's lots of different ways to measure that, and so state assessment is used by our state to monitor us and to monitor our classrooms, but there are many other ways that we monitor teaching and learning. And so really, I think that assessment is part of the ultimate learning guide. And so I wanted to open it up to you guys to see if you have any questions.
Ms. Grandis, I just appreciate it's kind of a reminder. I mean, so often, we look at the assessment scores in a competitive nature, how we as districts are doing against the other districts in the state. And I think this is a good reminder that it's really about how we help educate our kids and guide them through it. So I think this is refreshing and really kind of fun not to look at all those charts this year. Thanks.
He would say that, because I'm guessing the students were also thrilled that they didn't have to take the assessments either come springtime, too, which kind of leaves a hole. And Peter's mentioned it several times in terms of how that's kind of adapting, but I'm always curious what type of information you've received from CDE. The plan is in shape for spring, but there's, there's been a little bit of a gap, even with e-learning, that sometimes students are behind, and the level of achievement may not match based on the amount of time they spend in a classroom, even with e-learning. Have you seen or heard anything from CDE in terms of how they're going to be able to measure that? And I'm just going to talk younger grades. I'll come to the high school after you answer that.
Well, I think, you know, that's why they've really worked hard to provide those opportunities for the SAT and PSAT this fall, because it's really a gift, like it's something for students, but we know that it's going to provide us information. It's not exactly what you asked, Dave, but I wanted to-
I'm thinking more for elementary, middle school type of assessments versus high school. I'll come to high school in a second.
Well, I'll give you a sneak peek from the Acadiants Reading data that we're getting this fall, and what we're seeing is that, that students are performing maybe somewhat slightly lower, but not significantly lower than typical. So that's really exciting. And then taking some sneak peek into the data at STAR 360, this is the first time we've had it district-wide, but so far, it's looking like our students are achieving at about where you would expect. So we know that there are like COVID casualties from the lack of instruction or not lack of instruction, but maybe less than optimal in some situations where we know there were challenges, but, but it's, it's encouraging.
Sure. And the reason I say that is that, you know, when you don't have testing, you aren't able to fully assess and then kind of see, are we measuring how well we are? There's always going to be a blip here because of the virus. For high schoolers, I know there's probably a ton of anxiousness for parents and students in terms of achieving optimal grades on those tests, but at the same time, you know, they may not achieve as high as, for instance, previous students had who had a full classroom learning experience. And so my question is, how do colleges look and examine that type of data coming up? I mean, I'm concerned because that's going to put a serious, you know, have you heard anything from that in your experience?
Yeah, well, you know, a lot of colleges are waiving the requirement for SAT because it's been so challenging to give even. So I mean, I think, I think this is going to be a less rigorous year in terms of those scores for getting into colleges. I mean, I think, you know, maybe like some of the Ivy League schools or things like that are obviously still going to require it, but I think in Colorado, we're going to see a lot of gentleness around that.
Kind of a follow-up to that kind of question?
Yes.
It's not just setting back these, like, people going to college now, but the younger grades. In your opinion, what do you think colleges will start looking, like, do you think they'll change the benchmark just for this year or following years after? Because as a junior, I'm all, I also missed out on that little time outside of school. Do you think they'll change that or just take, move it back to the same after this year?
You know, what I'm hearing more and more is that colleges are becoming more like us in K-12 education, where we're looking, they're wanting to look more at a body of evidence. And so I think we're, we're going to, you know, like, we're not a number, right? And so looking at more of that portfolio, so the more that you can share as a, you know, a potential student, the better.
I have a question. You said that we've got a little preliminary sneak peek already coming in on some of the data, and it's reassuring and that's great. Do we have, and maybe, maybe you're not the right person to even ask this question of, but when the, when kids are showing a bigger gap, if we find a COVID casualty, if you will, do we have any- do we have any extra remedial stuff that we're offering this year that is going to help some of those kids get caught up a little more?
Yes, you know, I mean, I would say the one thing we have to remember is that's very school-specific in how they do that and what they provide. But something like STAR 360, when it gives us that information about where students are, many of our schools, and this is just one example, Mr. Van Weeran. One of our schools, or some of our schools have like something called Freckle. And so this is at the elementary level where they can provide practice to students based on how they perform on that assessment. And so they find, you know what, maybe fractions are typically taught in the spring and that was something that wasn't mastered from this third grade student and now they're in fourth grade, they can assign practice to them based on that. So that's just one example. But I think you're, you, you know, that, that's one of the challenges that we face, too. And so how can we do that and how can we best do that? And we know that at some of our schools, they're bringing students in for small group instruction to do that very thing. So, yeah, good question.
Anybody else? Thank you, that was very enlightening.
Absolutely, have a good night.
We're on to preliminary enrollment update.
Good evening, Board. Ron Sprengs, Director of Finance. It's that time of the year where, oh, I think Dave's already got me going here. It's that time of the year where, where we want to talk about our enrollment data. And David, I'm not seeing the- No.
It was there earlier, I saw it.
Yeah, it came up on my-
Yeah, like I'm looking for it. Yeah? I don't know where it's at.
Oh, it's under administrative-
Did something get dropped down?
It's under administrative-
Administrative content, that's what belongs.
Under administrative-
Yeah, all I know is just get off the wrench. Whap it a few times, that always helps.
The other one-
I don't, I've not seen it. Is there, is there a difference between the public and administrative with that, what you're saying?
Yeah, you'll need to, you'll need to log into, not the public page, but the Board Docs page for a board member or for headman.
My apologies for that.
I'm up. Can you see it?
Yeah, it's because it's-
So just to set it up a little bit, you know, just a few short weeks ago, we went ahead and approved a budget. I have to tell you, the day after that approval, we're working already on the amended budget that we're seeing. So here we go. Thank you, David. So I'm going to show you what this means and how to look at it and how to read it. This data is already old. I have the last week's data in here or I have it with me so I can tell you that data. Going forward, when I present this, I'll make sure the update gets into the Monday, the Monday package. So this is the district operated portfolio at the high level. If you want to go deeper into each individual zone or school, you can do that, it's on the corresponding pages. But I just want to talk about this, this first page to orientate you and how this graph works. So you'll see the green line in the middle of the graph. That represents the number of students that we based our budget on. So this 13, 490 was what we based our budget on. This gray line that's above it is our, what we call an anticipated build line. And that's three years of data on how we've trended our enrollment as we got to our October count. So we were a certain percent over our October count in July. Typically, our highest peak is that third or fourth week in July. And I take that percentage and I apply that to our budget. That's why those two, these two lines meet at the end here. Typically, on a normal enrollment year, we would want to see anywhere our actuals coming in on that, on that gray line in order to hit our budget. The gold solid line is our actual counts. Those are out of power school. And then this, the gold dotted line here takes, takes the same percentages as we, that anticipated build and it just kind of projects forward to see where we're at. So you can see, this was again, a week and a half ago. We were down, you can, up at the top right corner. See if I can, told David I could do this. Yeah, I can't. Oh, there it goes. You can see up in this top right corner, how many students we are down to budget. So that represents this point here to the budget line. And then the one below that is the, how much down we are to the anticipated build. So that's this point to the anticipated build line. So anywhere from 200 to 360 students down. The next piece of important information on here is what that means to our budget. So if we were to end the October count at where our numbers are currently, that would be, again, a week and a half ago, we would have been down 1.5 million. And then the second number here represents this ending number where we would go if we reach our, where I'm projecting us to go. So we'd be down 2.6. Those numbers from last week, we dropped another 134 students. So our, if the budget ended with that number, we would be down 2.568 or projected to be down 3.3 million. So some pretty, pretty large numbers that we're dealing with there. And this is why it's so important that we start this work early so that we can have some time to react.
Ron, could I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely, John.
Does this mean-
For Mr. Coster.
Does this mean parents are disenrolling their kids with the downward trend? I don't, why would it be going down?
I can't answer that on a, at a, on a whole level. I don't have that kind of information. I would, I would, I would guess that would be part of the information, what we're seeing here. Let me explain this, this next bit of information here, this moving class. This is kiddos that are already loaded in our system, probably from last year. And as the year has started and schools have reached out to see if these, these children will be attending school again, they haven't been able to make contact or they received a no or we just haven't been able to, to get a good contact on them. So instead, we, we're not allowed to take them out of our system until we get enrollment data from a different district. But until they make contact with the student and get confirmation that they're going to return, they move them to this, we call them moving class. So we, we're making the assumption that they've moved and that they're not attending D-49. So my numbers do not calculate that. So you can see the current, as of this report, was 770 kids in that moving class. And when, as of last Monday, it was 906. So we are seeing a lot of kiddos that were enrolled in our system at one point that we had not made contact with. Yeah. So.
And some of that is the military is now allowing PCS moves. So we have kids moving late from the Springs to other bases and stuff like that. So some of that could be attributed to that.
That's absolutely true. I mean, there's, there's lots of, there's lots of reasons.
I guess what's throwing me off, I understand that, right? But why would it have started higher? Like why in the beginning, at the end of July? Why has it dropped since then? That, that would imply that somebody was in the system and no longer is. Or either that or misunderstanding the data.
What we typically see, since we're, we're an early start district, is we do see that jump. And as you can see on the anticipated build, that's, that's a normal jump that we see at the beginning of or mid-July. We see that, that big jump. And then as we receive information from other districts and we disenroll and/or move kiddos to the, to the moving class, that number does come back down.
I guess, I guess I'm focusing on the actuals, though.
Right. And so, so this is, this is a weird year. And so you do see that jump in the first couple of weeks of July, just like we typically would see. But the, the drop has started earlier and has continued to go down. We didn't see the big jump at the beginning either that we normally see. So that's why we're below our budget right now.
Ron, I, I know these numbers don't include the charters. Do we have any corresponding bump in the charters where people have moved the other way?
Mr. Van Weeran, yeah, so the charter school, I don't have access to the charter information from our system. So this is information that we've gathered from, from the charters. We send email requests and they'll send us numbers back. And so I do have numbers and I will start to put these into the presentation. I was really interested in the geographic charter information, which excludes the online schools at, for GOAL and the ER BOCs. And if you look at all of them in total, they're, they're below budget as well. There are a couple out that are higher than normal and both are out in the Falcon Zone. That's Pipsel and Liberty Tree Academy. Both fairly high above budget, but the rest are bringing it down below budget. GOAL is, they're, they're, they're pretty much on their anticipated build line. And the ER BOCs is way high. They're, they're extremely high right now. So, but again, I'll, I'll start putting that information into them so you can see what they're doing as well.
So if I can, if I can jump in on that. I think, I think what, what we see is that there is some flight to online, which we might have projected and predicted. We are not seeing a flight to our charter schools, our, you know, that are in district geographic charter schools just because they might be open and receiving students sooner than our operated portfolio. So we're not seeing that trend that we might have suspected. But it is, it is kind of, you know, what you might suspect for online. The, the education we have mentioned, BOCs, again, that's under our umbrella, but it's, they're going to be their own student count. And typically, they haven't had a lot of our residents. You know, about 3% of their enrollment in the past had only been D-49 residents. So, because again, they're multi, they're multi-district statewide online programs. And so I assume that a lot of their, that are growth is still happening outside the district. So that still leaves kind of a big question mark on where the students are at, right? They're not, they're not in our operated school enrollments. They're not in our local charter school enrollments. It's kind of a mystery still. And that's why, you know, in prior years, I think we might have been more concerned, if you will, in some ways, because, because that historical trend had more meaning in prior years. That historical trend is a good point of reference for us now, but it's such an unknown that we're in right now. It's not that we're not concerned, but we're still kind of trying to withhold and saying, okay, let's see what happens when we get to September 8th, when we get to September 14th. Does that change things differently than we have seen in the past?
One other follow-on question. So on the moving class, I'm, I'm still just slightly confused. Is, is that in the number currently or not?
That is not in the number.
So you hold those out?
Correct, those come out. And that's, and typically, so I show what the changes from, from week to week. On this report, it was 57. On this last report, sorry, went down 136, or went up 136. And so that's why you're seeing some of the drastic jumps down as we're identifying those kiddos that aren't getting online and then joining. They're, they're moving those kiddos into the moving class.
May I add, there is a national pattern that we are aware of. We've, we have seen a significant jump in true homeschooling, or at least, at least initial efforts at homeschooling. We also have observed, as Mr. Sprengs was talking about, that some of these, these deltas, lower than expected numbers are especially prominent with kindergarten students. So we may have parents who are kind of looking at the world and saying, maybe 2020 isn't the year to start kindergarten. And because they have that option, they may be pushing that decision off farther. I've described this in several settings as a flight to certainty. People, you know, uncertainty is fatiguing, it's, it's stressful. And so locking in a known quantity, even if it isn't your number one choice, it's your secure choice. And so we, we do think we're seeing some fight to certainty. And so some people may consider a brand-new charter school a more certain choice. Others may say, I don't want to go to a school operating in its first year. That's not certain. So how people evaluate that may change, but that is a key priority criterion that they're using.
The homes, our homeschool?
Yeah, I was going to ask you about the-
Yeah, so again, if you go through here, you can see all the zones.
Spring Studio and PPEC.
I'm sorry, John.
Basically, the iConnect Zone schools.
You bet. If, if you're curious, there's a, the slide in there that shows the primary and secondary for the geographic zones for high, high school, middle school and elementary. So you can see where those are at. And really, the, the big driver for our geographic zones is the elementary. And then starting with the iConnect, you can see that is, that is a bright and shining zone for us. There, there are currently 150, 155 kiddos over budget. And a lot of that is driven by the Spring Studio. And a lot of it is driven by our, our internal Falcon homeschool program.
And I would think that we are ensuring parents know about our homeschool program and the Spring Studio hybrid. Because if they're doing homeschool, stuff like that, that they can get a lot out of still being part of District 49. So that's where I see, I see a lot of change there. And I've heard a lot of talk in our community about going to those, those schools. And people asking about, you know, is there a homeschool program? So there may be, you know, district-wide people that don't realize that we have a district-operated homeschool program. So that could bring them back into the fold if we can get that word out there.
Absolutely.
They don't want to do e-learning, they want to do strictly homeschooling. So, and that's a wonderful program. Okay, thank you so much.
You bet. Any other questions?
So I guess what I don't understand is, should I be concerned or not? Because in your next report, you say, in your conclusion, the district is in good financial condition. So I just don't know from this report, is this a, don't worry, everything's fine? Or, well, this may be something to be concerned about as we watch the trend emerge?
I'm sorry, was this on?
Huh?
Where are you seeing that?
That's in your next report, in your monthly report.
Oh, my, that's last year's 19, that's last year's 1920 financials.
So how do I piece those two facts together? I'm looking for, am I concerned or not on this briefing?
So on my briefing, yes, I'm, I'm concerned. I'm going to go up to the, go to the front again and show you these, these potential budget adjustments that we're going to have to make. And that's not moving for me anyway. So again, those numbers currently are at 2.5 million less money due to student loss. Or if we hit that last number, and again, you know, these numbers are based on our old trends and hopefully, we won't see those trends. But if that's the case, we're going to be down 3.4 million. And so the reason why it's so important that we do this work right now is we've already been in contact, working with zone leaders on, if this were to play out, what's, what are we going to do? And so we've had some discussions and we're going to have to continue to have those discussions as we go forward.
Because in my world, so if you have a, a work in contracting and let's say your customer cuts your contract by 10% and you wait half the year to implement that 10% cut, the cut is now 20%. And so I guess the, I guess what I'll be looking for you guys in the coming weeks and months is, how soon do we react?
Exactly, yes. And so, yes, you are, in terms of the two presentations, you know, the, the next presentation is about the year end of June 30th, as of June 30th, completing last year. That was in good position. And, but as we're launching into this year, we, there definitely are things that we're concerned about. We're watching very carefully. With the uncertainty and the unpredictability, we, we don't have as much clarity to say it's going to be a problem. it's going to be a problem like we might have had at this point a year ago if we were in the same, with the same numbers. But this is that. So, yeah, this is something that we are concerned about and we're watching, and if something, if it continues to materialize, then yes, we will be bringing more information and more potential decisions to you all throughout the month of September and October.
Okay. I think the bottom line is, we really, we can see kind of a trend month-to-month, but until we do our October count, we really don't know, because finances, finances are based on October count. And then you'll have to start making adjustments to the adjusted budget.
Correct.
Which, which we, you know, they plan for, but we don't vote on until January?
Yeah, the amended budget is, is worked on then between October and January, and we, and we, we bring that to you for consideration in January.
And they can implement certain things, but we actually, as a board, don't take action until the amended budget. And it's just the way it is. You know, unless they come to us with the very, very dire, you know, a lot of kids are not in for the October count.
Just to make sure I'm reading the data right, though, it does look like we're going to take a disproportionate amount of the shortfall in the Falcon Zone, is that correct?
That, I think the, the largest zone right now is the, is the Power Zone with the shortfall, but Falcon Zone's not far behind, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I, maybe I did misread it then. Glad I asked the question.
And, and I might be going off of the new data, the, this week's data instead of last week's.
I, I'm showing Falcon Zone student count summary, 137 below, and the total is, from the front page, was 198. And so 137 of that is Falcon Zone?
Yeah.
Okay.
But then again, there's going to be positive from the iConnect Zone, so if you look at the Power Zone tab as well.
Right.
Yeah.
It's always a complicated, mixed data, and you guys plan it out as best you can, and you inform us, and we make those decisions based on community values and priorities.
Yeah, that work's going on, so we'll continue to...
You ready for the next one?
I, I am.
It's now the monthly financial update, starring Ron Sprems.
It is, I'm not going to make you guys look at my face anymore. I introduced this, this gentleman at, at one of the Zoom meetings. This is Scott Trapp. He's been with the district since, was it November? October, October of last year, so he's almost here a year. He's taken over the reporting for this financial report, and so I'm going to let him step in and give you the data. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you. Hi, I'm Scott Trapp, financial reporting analyst. Happy to be here. And while Mr. Sprems was talking about the future, I'm going to be talking about the past. This is going to be our first look at our end-of-year of 2019, 2020 budget, and I want to just remind everyone, this is our first iteration. We are still actively working on closing the books, as it were, and in October, we anticipate we will bring you the final 2019, 2020 financial reporting. And as has been hinted, you know, this has been a crazy year. COVID has permeated our 2019 budget and will continue to have an effect on our 2020, 21 budget, as Mr. Sprems indicated. I want to look at three things in this financial report. The first thing I want to look at, I want to look at an example of how COVID is affecting some of our budgeting within some of our specific departments. Then the next two things I want to look at are some of the simplest indicators of the 2019, 2020 financial health of the district. So first thing I want to look at, there we go, let's go to 40, page 43, I believe, Dave.
I'm already halfway through.
Um, let's move up a few pages. It should be like a gold-looking brick that says, all right, go, all right, slow down, like, three more. Nope, it's not. Well, anyway, I'll just go ahead and talk. It's, it's our internal vendors group I wanted to talk about, our internal vendors group at...
That, that is page 43 of the board docs presentation.
Well, I can speak to it anyway. So anyway, our internal vendors group, we have a couple of departments in there that were affected by COVID. Our first being our facilities department. We had a budget overage due to unanticipated sanitation needs of, of COVID. We had to go buy sanitizers, cleaning supplies, disinfectants, et cetera. And then our second department that's been affected by COVID has been our, our information technology department. We had to go out and provide Chromebooks and hotspots and internet connectivity for all of our students. And the result of that was our IT budget was overspent by $500,000. I bring this up because COVID is going to continue to play an effect in our future budgets, and secondly is that we are thankful for the Government Cares Act, which gives us monies to spend towards sanitation, towards IT, towards staffing, and, and other categories. So we're thankful to have that money, and that will play an effect in the 2020, 21 budget that spends the COVID Cares Act money. The next thing I want to look at are going to be on pages 18 and 19 of the financial packet. I just want to look at some simple indicators of the district's health in 2019, 2020. And the first one of these I want to look at is going to be our balance sheet snapshot. This is called the fund balance summary on page 19. You know, and this right here lists our assets and liabilities. Assets are going to be our tangible items, buildings, buses, et cetera. Liabilities are going to be debts or anticipated payouts. And the first thing I want to look at there is, I want to look at both the numbers. Our assets are at 102 million, and our liabilities are at 65 million. That's a net positive, so that's the first thumbs up that we're in a decent financial position. There we go. The second thing I want to look at is, on the revenue expense side, or the income statement snapshot, this, this is, this is also an indicator of financial health. What I want to look at there is that our bottom line shows 172 million in revenue and 169 million in expenses. You know, the net of that is going to be $3 million, and that is a positive. That is also, you know, a thumbs up of our financial health. Last year was in a good position. This $3 million, now, I will forewarn everyone, this is still, this number's in flux, we haven't finalized the books yet, but this number could potentially carry over into next year's budget and could have a positive impact. But, you know, like I said, this number's still in flux, and just like your favorite TV drama, you know, we'll kind of leave you on a cliffhanger, we'll have to wait till the next episode, the next meeting, to figure out where this number ends up. So anyway, I hope we had an okay glimpse of our, you know, a high-level look at our financial condition, and we look forward to sharing with you the finalized 2019, 2020 financial information with the board next month. Any comments or questions?
Scott, would you be able to address the COVID relief funds, the CRF, and how they've been used from last year, 1920, and how it affects this year, meaning 20, to school year 2020 to 2021?
Sure. So we have roughly, if we use round numbers, we have $6 million in COVID relief funds. This is a one-time government allocation to be used in the school year 2020, 21, and they're split up between four categories, being, you know, facilities, janitorial needs, above and beyond what's normal, sanitation, et cetera. Information technology needs, as we launch our E49 initiative, supporting that, and the other one's going to be staff, staffing and curriculum. So we, as finance people, we have developed budgets for each one of these four categories, and we have put them out there amongst all of our staff, our principals, our zone leaders, et cetera, and we actively monitor, track, and discuss these as we move into the 2021 school year.
I'm going to step in real quick and, and tell you a little bit about the CRF funds for, this is for last year. So one of the things you're going to see as we finalize the statements for, for next year is, we're going to be moving a lot of the labor, the salary and benefit amounts that we incurred for our professional development days that we did during our, our season of E49, the 1920 school year. As we move those salary and benefits to the, the Corona Relief Fund, or this, it's held in Fund 22, if anyone's excited about that kind of thing. If, as we move those funds out of our general fund to the Corona Relief Funds, this will create, you know, a, a net revenue increase over expenses, thus our fund balance will increase, and we'll be able to use that, those funds in our general fund in the 1920, 21 budget. I think I confused myself, so I'm sure I confused you. What kind of questions do you have?
Yes, as, as we apply the CRF funds to last year's actual results, that will result in a savings to the general fund that will increase the general fund, fund balance at the end of last year and provide one-time on-fund spending opportunity as we go into this year for 20/21. So it will be a little bit complicated, but that's the way that we could best document the use of the CRF funds and provide the most flexibility to how those, how we can apply funds for this year.
Much more eloquent.
And my understanding is, this year's funds only goes up till the end of December of 2020, correct? We don't go into next calendar year?
The CRF program, yes. All the money that we've received for the CRF program has to be spent by December 31st, that's correct.
And of course, a friendly reminder for everybody, including myself, to remember is that the CRF monies is a one-time deal. It's not an ongoing, consistent fundage that's coming to us.
That's correct, one-time funds.
That's correct.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. I greatly appreciate all your input and your insight. We are now on to the Orton School partnership.
Good evening, Board. I am just here to see if there are any questions regarding the disclosure document that I submitted to the packet this evening.
Go ahead.
And I can go, I can explain some of that, if you'd like me to, or?
Yeah, I, I struggle with this to a certain degree, and I, I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, as, when I was a full-time pastor, it was made very clear to us that if we were a full-time pastor, we had to stay a full-time pastor, we couldn't have any other occupations or jobs, and yet, at the same time, I, I also know that you are a multi-talented person, as are many people within our district, and that, that creates an opportunity. I, I need a lot more clarity than just this paragraph in terms of how that relationship is working, Dr. Pickering. I appreciate the fact that you're, you're there and you're sharing talents, but I'm, I'm not getting an understanding of how Orton works and how your relationship with Colorado Literacy, I'm going to say that name wrong.
Learning Center.
Thank you. And Learning Center, how that, how that relationship works with you. I, I, I have to, I say, I come at it as a very possessive type of person. I mean, we love to have you for all for ourself, yet also, I know you're talented to be able to do that, but it creates some imbalance to me in terms of how we view that here, because this, this says that you're doing it, but it doesn't provide particulars or details. You know, contract, scope of work, amount of time that you spend with that. How's that relationship working, and what's the expectation with how that is? I mean, there's Allies is, while it's a great program and it's fantastic, and I'm possessive about that too, I understand that there are other needs beyond what Allies may be able to provide just within our community here in the east side of Colorado Springs. So I'm kind of, I'm needing a little more flesh to this before I'm able to say, great, if you can see where I'm coming from.
And Mr. Christen, the board member, I'm going to, I'm going to speak on Dr. Pickering's behalf, in, in part because it's, it's simply more appropriate for me as his supervisor to articulate this. Last year, I spent somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 hours being a, a member of the National Baldridge Community, serving as an examiner, senior examiner, training, attending conferences, examining another organization, another school district, as it happens. And that did not create any conflict of interest, because that is part of my role here. I also serve on the Commissioner's Council for COVID impacts. We had our first meeting today. Work with the Superintendent's Association, work with CASE and CDE and CASB in different roles, and those are all appropriate. They don't create any conflict of interest, because none of those organizations have overlapping interests or services with District 49. And so many members of our administration, many teachers, in fact, serve in many other roles. We, we have UCCS professors on our staff, many of our administrators serve in cohorts or, or just serve as adjunct instructors at UCCS. We don't expect them to justify their, their, their being not just full-time, right? We, we are greedy, we're, we want our people. The only reason Dr. Pickering is any, is under any obligation to disclose this particular commitment is because there is a potential overlap of interests, because we provide a service through our Allies school that is similar to what is being provided at the Orton School. And so that's why, after consultation with our, our legal counsel and under my direction, Dr. Pickering brought this conflict of interest disclosure. I want to make certain what we're not doing is suggesting that Dr. Pickering has to get permission to serve and have other outside interests and, and outside commitments, even outside businesses, or he could be an author or a presenter or a trainer, lots of our people already are. That's not the issue. And, and I understand your, your comparison to a pastoral role, that's not the issue. And so I, I want to discourage us from pursuing that. The issue is that if that outside interest overlaps with the district interest, then that overlap creates what we call ethically, a potential conflict of interest, and that requires disclosure. It's the same exact kind of issue if I were to, I consult, I consult a lot educationally. If I were to consult with District 20, and I was trying to show District 20 how they could increase choice and attract students, that would be a substantial conflict of interest. But when I consulted with the Palo Alto School District in California, that was not a conflict of interest, because we have no common interest. So I just want to be crystal clear that what we're not saying is, may Dr. Pickering have this additional responsibility. What we are saying is, must Dr. Pickering publicly disclose the possibility of a conflict and, and frame it appropriately?
If, if, if there's no requirement, or, I, I'm not, I'm not finding the right word. If we don't have to grant permission, then what's the point of the disclosure?
Transparency, and that's, we, we reviewed this with our legal counsel. The, the point of the disclosure is to identify the potential for a conflict. So you don't eliminate conflicts of interest, you manage them, and the first step to managing a conflict of interest is public disclosure.
And I do have an email from Mr. Miller, who is observing the meeting off-site. He said he has reviewed Mike Pickering's disclosure of a possible conflict of interest and finds these items to be legally correct and appropriate. So it's basically just letting us know that, you know, for transparency, so we don't hear from a third source and say, what's going on? Because we're always saying, give us information, give us information. It's just, it's, it's a courtesy to, to the board and to the community that, that he's going to be doing a little bit of work for the Orton guys.
Dr. Pickering, could you tell us about the Orton Academy, and, and like, where does it draw its students from? Is it taking students from District 49, or throughout the city, or the state, or? And if I was a parent and I had to choose between Allies and Orton, would you recommend one or the other? I mean, I'm curious, just, if you could explain a little bit?
So a little bit about Orton Academy. Orton Academy is authorized by the Education Reenvision BOCs. And so through that authorization, we have had the ability to be able to then operate...
Could you get a little bit closer?
Yes. It is, as I say, authorized through the Education Reenvision BOCs. And through that authorization, we have authorization to open up and have opened up Orton Academy, which is a, about 60-student population school right now, public school. It is located in, and the Colorado Military Academy location right now as well. When you talk about kind of where do we draw students from, well, really, it is all over of Colorado, actually. It's not, you know, any specific... It's not, you know, any specific particular district, but because of the authorization and because of school choice law within Colorado, we are able to draw from all over Colorado as well. You know, you asked me a question that quite honestly, I do think is, you know, it's a question that is a fair question, as far as this idea of, you know, if something was presented to me and someone told me, you know, where would you send your child? You know, at the same time, that's something that, again, I believe I can have a lot of separation when I talk about that and what my role is in that as well. You know, how I've always described Allies, you know, Orton Academy, for example, in its, in its actual charter application, was described as a school that is replicating the model of Allies. Allies is something that has complete focus of me as well, and something that, you know, I've always said, it is a school, in my opinion, a shining star in this district. There are other shining stars, or many shining stars within this district. But it is a school that absolutely, the one thing that I know is that it helps children, and it helps of the most struggling children. The reason that I got into education was to help struggling children. It wasn't necessarily to do many other things that may come away, and the real passion is around helping students. And so when we saw, and I felt that there was a need in order to expand the opportunity farther and be able to get more students into our, into that programming, that's, that's the direction that I went. What we've also seen within District 49 is we are seeing every single year, more and more District 49 students taking the opportunity at Allies. And we are seeing less and less and less opportunity for any outside students to be able to access that programming. Because we're basically having to at Allies turn array students who are not in District 49, because the popularity of it and the word of mouth is gaining so much, there's becoming less and less opportunity throughout El Paso County and throughout the state of Colorado to serve some of our most struggling readers in the entire state. And so, again, that's where my passion lies, that's why at the Colorado Literacy and Learning Center, that's what we're trying to do, is to be able to expand that type of opportunity for students across Colorado.
Yeah, I support, I support what you're doing, because my granddaughter goes to Allies, and I realize how critical it is and how short the resource is for this important capability. So I just appreciate you explaining to us what it is, because I just don't know anything about it, but also the fact that you're doing it, because so many kids struggle with dyslexia.
So, if I may, that Reenvisioned BOCs is sponsored by, is that the correct word? By District 49, we have a working relationship with them. I have been appointed by this Board of Education to be a member of their Board of Education. So we work with, and are, and they are an integral part of us, Reenvisioned BOCs. This is just one of their new schools, it is operating. And what their, what their charter is, is to try new and innovative things and get it out there throughout the state. And this model of Orton using Allies as a model, you know, we're hoping that it just reaches more kids. That other districts can see that an Allies-like model can work anywhere.
Yeah.
And that they can reach more kids, because I don't know what it is, but what is it, 5%, 10% of the kids will have dyslexia? Whatever the number is, it's significant, and Allies will be packed out pretty soon. So this is just another step in public education for Colorado to try and get these dyslexia-like schools to show that they work. Now, there are three, Allies is one of three dyslexia schools, and Orton is gonna be the fourth one in the state of Colorado, from what I've been told.
In the state of Colorado, although Allies, I think, is the, I will say it's the premier option of its kind because of the connection to the...
Because it's a public school, and the other, other dyslexias, the other two dyslexia schools are private.
Mr. Graham, if I may, I would also like to answer Mr. Koster's question about if, in the hypothetical, if somebody asks for a recommendation, I would expect Dr. Pickering to recuse himself and not answer that question.
Yeah.
That would be the most ethical thing to do. Because of the possibility, we are in the same metro region. If this school was in Fort Collins, I would expect him to enthusiastically recommend it to people who live in Fort Collins. But it is possible our attendants areas do overlap, and so, these are excellent questions, it's why you disclose publicly.
Right.
I would actually say that the answer should be, I cannot tell you on that, but I will provide contact numbers to the different schools that I know of, that you can talk to them directly. Right? So you do provide contact information. Colorado is a choice state. If a person chooses their child to go to Allies because it's the best fit, or they choose Orton, that it's the best fit, it's what works best for that family and that child. That's what I say.
I just want to add a little bit, a different perspective to this, and I do see this differently than other conflict of interest situations, because, and this is where I want, I advise the board to be careful with it, and not, not saying I don't endorse it or anything, but other conflict situations that we have, like Peter mentioned, people doing consulting, or we have the TAG, the TAG, you know, operation, you know, that does substitute, and knowing that, hey, that's a person that's already related to the district. Those are different scenarios that are coming to the district, not, not an overlap, not a competition scenario. And so I believe that this is, in this situation, it's more than disclosure, because you are, you are being made aware of a competitive, a competitor being, being put forth by one of your employees.
Yeah.
And how do you feel about that? So it's a little bit different than most of the other conflict situations that we faced before. And that's what I, that's all I want to make sure that you think about that.
No, thank you, that's a good point of view. I feel it's awesome that students in other school districts will have the chance to participate in Allies-like school. I understand that, what you're, exactly what you're saying, and I move that we, unless there's any more significant questions, we need to move on and...
I have questions still.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We've been on this one a long time.
I know. Dr. Pickering, the, as the Power Zone leader, the principal of Allies actually is your direct report, is that correct?
I'm sorry, the director of Allies is what?
Is your direct report. That reports through your, through the Power Zone, correct?
Yes, through the, yes, to be, yes, yes, my direct report.
So in addition to student competition, if there is staff issues in terms of staff shortages, you're, so we have district, we have money flowing through District 49 that's going to both of these schools essentially, is what's really, is what I'm hearing, that the money for Odyssey actually is gonna flow through Education Reenvisioned, through our PPOR essentially, because we count those...
Well, it's, it's part of the umbrella, right? And we mentioned our student count earlier, that ER BOCs include in our student count, and these will be ER BOCs students, which means they technically, yes, will run through our financials.
Okay. So I guess my question is more, how do you feel about how unbiased you can be about decisions you make toward either school? Because, for instance, if somebody came up with a proposal, which I haven't seen one, and I have no idea if there has ever been one, but to expand Allies, as the zone leader, is that something, if you've got a competing enterprise, that you would be able to support effectively, or otherwise represent effectively, if you've got a competing interest?
You know, I think that's something that I can emphatically ensure that will happen. You know, we have been talking about trying to expand Allies within D49, create a middle school opportunity, for a number of years now. Unfortunately, the past probably at least, not just this year, but 24 months even longer than that budget, you know, is always a concern. It's always something that's so tight as well. And so it's something that we haven't been able to do. However, we've talked a lot about the matriculation up of our students from Allies into Skyview, because that's our feeder pattern within the Power Zone. That's where our students go when you are a fifth grader and you graduate from Allies. The school that you would go to would be Skyview, unless you, of course, make another choice. And that is something that there's been a lot of collaboration with, training even, that has happened, so that we can ensure that we do have as solid a pathway as possible. And, you know, to most directly answer your question, I do not think that there would be any issue that I would have with continuing to support and to champion the expansion of Allies. My, my wish and hope is that there is an Allies, that is, like Allies, that is available within District 49 at some point, that would serve potentially second graders through graduation. Because I think some of us think that this dyslexia thing is something that, you know, maybe when you're in middle school, maybe when you're in high school, maybe when you're 35, or 55, or 85, you don't have it anymore. That's not dyslexia. Dyslexia is dyslexia, and you have it regardless of the age. Now, there is some developmental factors, that's why I start with second grade, and I don't say kindergarten or preschool, because there's some developmental components to that that we need to kind of flesh out before we can really tell if it is dyslexia or not. And so that's why I use second through 12th. But nothing would make me happier, because I know that these types of schools change lives dynamically. And there's nothing that would make me happier than to have a much expanded option throughout District 49. And I do not believe that would create any conflict with me internally with other roles that I currently have.
Well, I agree 100% in terms of the need to make this kind of education available to as many kids as possible in this region. And if District 49, through Education Reenvisioned, and Odyssey can expand that opportunity further as a result, then I don't see how that is necessarily truly a conflict of interest at that point, because essentially, you are working on the same mission we are, and the funds are actually all going through the same coffers that they would have anyway. So thank you for your answer on that, and Godspeed. I think, I think that our dyslexic kids have suffered long enough, and having a real, a real option for them is a huge blessing to the community.
So I'm gonna get a little stern now. And when we were originally briefed, this is for the administration mostly, and a little bit for your zone, when we were originally briefed on Allies, which was before this board was sitting, so that all the new board members understand, Allies was going to be a school within a school program that will basically learn the best ways to reach, you know, using proven methods, data, and all this other stuff to reach the dyslexia kids. And then what works is supposed to branch out to the other elementary schools, to the other, you know, and then up into secondary as well. So Allies has been what, in place? This is the third year?
Believe me, it's before.
Yep, that about...
You gotta go, there was the Lex Center, right? There was, there was the Lex Program, then the Lex Center, then School Within a School, and then Allies. I would say Allies is in its sixth year, but as a standalone school, it's in its, we're now in our fourth year.
Okay, going into our fourth year.
Yes.
And so what the board then expected, and I can't speak for the whole board, but this is something you just, Rick Van Wieren just brought up, is we expect what works at Allies to start slowly and appropriately getting introduced into our other schools and into our secondary schools. So, you know, we want to see that, it's a little hard right now with the COVID stuff going on, but we want to see that eventually grow, so that students that have dyslexia in Falcon Middle School, or Falcon High School, or Sand Creek High School are getting services as well. Right now, they're, you know, they go what, up to fifth grade in Allies, and then, you know, not necessarily on their own, but we have to train general education teachers, and we have to train, you know, the leadership in the different schools to, you know, continue and develop further programs. So I see an expansion of Allies into our elementary schools, the programs that work, and then I see it expanding upward through 12, into 12, so that whatever programs, you know, a 10th or 11th grader needs, they've got those resources available to them. Then I could see, based on the successes of Allies and District 49, I see this booming across Colorado.
Mr. Graham, I completely agree with you. One example I would just give you is that through Allies creation, that brought us something called Dyslexia 101, and it also brought us something called the Dyslexia Experience.
Oh, yeah.
Both of those are something that we have done at our literacy summits here within D49, and we have had individuals, teachers mainly, either do the experience or actually do the dyslexia. The Dyslexia Experience is literally a simulation where you begin to understand how someone with dyslexia feels when they're attempting to read, especially when they're attempting to read under pressure. And the Dyslexia 101 is some foundational literacy skill development. It's called structured literacy, and it's a bit of a training as well that we've been doing around the district. And so there already has been some of that, that we have tried to move throughout the district.
Okay. Well, when you're ready for to brief us on more expansion, Wes.
Hold on. No. If you don't mind, I have something to say. One is, I appreciate everybody's passion for the dyslexia learning, the advantage that Allies brings. I know everybody appreciates that. And Dr. Pickering, you disclosing this potential conflict is very appropriate. Thank you. Appreciate that. We heard from legal counsel, which was the real question I had, had counsel looked at it, and you just read the quote from our counsel, and it sounds like we're okay here. And I think the, the job of making sure you do your job here is on Mr. Hiltz, who you report to, and I'm sure he will hold you accountable if you start faltering, and I'm sure if something really goes awry, our wonderful Humans Resource Department will step in. So for me, this isn't really debate. We've been, I think we've had an appropriate disclosure, it's within the realm of the law as interpreted by Mr. Miller, and we have an accountability system. So I think you've done the right thing by us. I appreciate it, and I would recommend we end this discussion, because there's no action on it.
Yes, I agree. I don't think we need to vote on this or move it forward or anything. So it's been disclosed, the board has accepted this, the disclosure, time to move on.
If there were consensus of the board to, to direct me to provide additional reporting, particularly consistent with Mr. Ridgway's concern, as he raised it and framed it, that would be completely appropriate. You're correct, it wouldn't require a vote, but you're certainly within your role, your lane to task me with additional clarification and disclosure, and additional, you could task me to provide additional direction to Dr. Pickering. For example, we would not expect him to do Orton business during his normal work hours. Now, the phrase "normal work hours" for a zone leader should make you snicker, because if I do a search for his...
I just heard some snickers.
You know, his email after midnight is, that's not a small list. Mr. Almeda is constantly emailing us after 9:00, 9:30, 10:00 p.m. So, so I acknowledge that that idea of a regular work week is a little fuzzy, but nevertheless, I would expect Dr. Pickering to keep a very hard line between the work that he does for us and the work that he does for us.
Okay, do I have any board members that...
Oh, I'd gladly task Mr. Hiltz with more work.
You agree with that, as he said it? Okay. Dave, concur?
Yeah.
John?
Yeah, yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And same with me, you're so directed.
Thank you.
Okay, and you can come up with the wording for that direction a little bit more specifically. Thank you, Mr. Pickering, Dr. Pickering.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to keep you up there so long.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, update the 2021 school year calendar?
I am here tonight on behalf of the education leadership team and with input from our principals, we're asking you to consider a small change to our current school year calendar. It would require board approval. The date of September 4th has traditionally been a workday for teachers. It's used for professional training, preparation, planning, and in light of our current e-learning situation, we are asking you to consider retaining that day as is for our elementary schools, so a non-student contact day, especially because we will be bringing back elementary students in person that next Tuesday. We know our elementary schools will need that extra time to feel confident to bring children back in person, but we'd like to recapture that day as a learning day for our secondary students, so for our middle and high school students who are currently e-learning and would continue to e-learn on that day. We know some families may have had pre-planned trips or other... We know some families may have had pre-planned, um, trips or, um, other occasions and we would direct the schools to, um, consider those to be excused absences in that case.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Would like to move on. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the calendar does have to be moved forward for a vote. Do I have consensus to move this item forward to ten, uh, September?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
I'm sorry, I was reading her notes.
Moving this, this item, the board, the school year calendar forward to the next regular meeting.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes, I, with one little question. If the day is September four and our meeting is September ten?
Yes.
You have to announce this to people so they know what they're giving.
So, so the, there, there's the informal and the formal. The informal is we wanna let our, our, uh, teachers and our secondary students know this would be, uh, a learning day. That we can do informally. The formal part of adjusting the calendar has to do with what we can report to CDE. And so it, it doesn't matter that that, the sequence is not relevant to the formal side. The communication is very relevant on the informal side. So we would immediately, with your, with your intent to move it forward, we will inform our teachers and our students in secondary schools. And then after you formally approve it, we would report it appropriately to CDE.
Okay, we're still good with moving it forward. Thank you. I have policies reflecting Title IX changes. We did a temporary vote last time, fairly quick. And then what our policy says is when we do, when we do that quick temporary vote, then we put it into the normal system, discuss it, and then vote at a regular meeting to make them permanent. Go ahead.
You're, you're making the right explanation, but the wrong item. We're doing the reopening of schools, not the Title IX changes.
Yeah. There you go. Too much red. Okay, policies related to reopening schools, we also discussed these, right?
Yeah.
And has anything changed with those policies?
Not substantively.
Okay, so these are the same policies, just like the next item will be, that we talked about and temporarily passed. And it's part of our procedures now to add them into the regular way of doing business, which is present them at a work session, then vote on them at a regular session once we, when we have previously temporarily passed them. So do I have board concession, uh, consensus to move policies related to reopening schools?
I concede.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we're moving that, policies related to reopening schools when, and it also applies to policies reflecting Title IX changes. I didn't see any significant changes there. It's just making the policies permanent. Do we have consensus to move it forward?
Yes. Yes.
Move it forward.
Yes.
Yes, it's moving forward. Those two items are now moving forward. Brett, thanks for the correction. We're now on policy and procedure review and we have, uh, a whole bunch of different policies here. And I just wanna point out to, uh, the board members that school board member conduct, code of conduct for individual meetings, board member code of ethics, uh, a couple of those, board organizational meetings, rules of orders, stuff like that. So a lot of these changes apply to us, chief officer contracts, things like that. So, does anybody have any questions on these particular policies?
Not on those particular policies, but I do wanna say thanks to the chief officers for continuing to move forward things. I say that perhaps on behalf of Donna because she does appreciate keeping the mill going in terms of our three-year update, in terms of reviewing, uh, growing them or changing them in any way, shape or form. So thank you for doing that.
Do I have any other questions or concerns, consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Move it forward.
Yes.
Move it forward.
Okay, we're gonna move those items forward. Delia, this is part of the, the boring part of board meetings.
Sorry. No, I haven't heard your, my favorite part.
Okay, now we're on to chief education officer report.
Yes, I will be brief, uh, but I do want to observe what a, what a really, um, amazing performance we've gotten out of our technology tonight. And I really specifically wanna honor, uh, Mark Roscoe and our friend Eric from Sentinel who are, who are sitting there over there. Folks, these guys have been pulling cable. They've been testing and stress testing and, and confirming. Uh, meanwhile, Kevin, who really helps manage our audio in this building, uh, Kevin Roach, our building manager here, has been testing. Give these guys a hand.
Kevin, Kevin.
That's quite a setup.
That's amazing.
Just really, really impressed with the quality, uh, of this, of this kind of moving production that we have here. And I think we all realize what a, what a significant lift it was to get this production working. And, and I know I'm, I'm the education guy and I'm speaking about operational support. There's Kevin, uh, coming, coming out to say, to acknowledge the gratitude. Thank you, Kevin. Um, really impressed. What, what we're seeing out of Mark and Eric and Kevin is what we're asking of our teachers and our principals. And so as, as the education guy on this, uh, on this side of the square here, I really wanna affirm the work that they are doing. Um, it, it has been profound and the lift that, at our schools to get e-learning and to get it to a high quality has been really strong. I'm also gonna mention that the document that we call the, the education office report or the CEO report, it looks different this month because we have converted, this was our first full conversion from a Word document PDF model to an Envizio export PDF model. And so what you are seeing in the chief officer report is the, is, is exported narrative and updates and graphical elements from Envizio, our strategic and operational planning platform. And that's part of why it looks a little bit longer, uh, than you're used to, but it's also because it in, Envizio automatically generates title pages for the different, uh, departments and, uh, units that we're reporting on. So we would really appreciate it if you guys can scrub this, ask some questions, say what you like and don't, um, because this is really one. Uh, I will tell you already, we think we might take this report and flip it from portrait to landscape orientation because it helps manage the graphics a little bit better. Um, but I, I really give huge kudos to our zone leaders and our, our, our education department leaders and Barbara Sealy for her work with Envizio, with the communications team, uh, professionals, um, and with all of the people who produce this report. So, uh, I'm glad to answer questions if you have any about the education office report.
Gentlemen, don't be shy. Okay, to our public, you know, these reports are, uh, give you a lot of the detail as to what each organization at the headquarters level is doing. And they're very important reports. They take a lot of time put together, so, you know, I read through them and I hope everyone on the board reads through them before the meetings and I hope that, uh, our public and staff read through them. They'll give you a very good insight into what the district is doing from all three chief officers in their, uh, departments. Brett?
Thank you. So I just wanted to, to show a couple of things, in particular on the business office report. Uh, one, you know, in the human off, human resources section, we, we have the, the document that, uh, we went through in, in live form, uh, tonight when we had our, uh, new administrator meet and greet. And so that was good and here's a way that, uh, anyone can, can see those people and, and see a little bit of background on them and, 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 uh, welcoming them in, into these new roles. Trying to, I'd like to move a little bit faster if I could through that.
If you could draw masks on their face, I recognize them.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Um, I really wanted to draw some attention, uh, to the, to the community facility planning section, especially for, for board members that, that are still kind of in their first year to, to the board. So please read this section because this, uh, is prepared by Melissa, Melissa Andrews, community facility planning manager, and talks about the board policies related to how decisions are made or how priorities are derived, I should say, not decisions are made, but how priorities are derived in capital maintenance issues in the annual cycle that we do for that. Uh, so she's got a few slides in there that really go through the process, talk about, uh, who's involved, right? There's, it's not just her, it's not just her and I, there's a, there's a group that goes across the offices, uh, that, that, uh, participates in that. So I encourage you to spend some time with that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to, you know, just bring to your attention again is, is the information that I, I routinely give you, uh, from, uh, Calla Trust and, and my participation on, on their board and getting the economic data that we have, that we have there. Here is some information, you know, some really interesting stuff here about there's unemployment, for instance, on the left. There's the massive spike in the unemployment rate that went up to fifteen percent with, with the virus shutdown, the virus recession, the coronavirus recession. And while it has dropped down and there has been some recovery, uh, unemployment still is, was over ten percent in July. Okay, so it's still a lot of, of negative impact happening, happening to the economy out there. The, the two lines that are on here, one is, one is unemployment and the other one is underemployment. In the past, that's been something I've, I've paid, uh, particular attention to, especially in the last recession, the gap between underemployment and unemployment, uh, grew, uh, pretty big because people were still working and trying to work. But they are often being, being employed in jobs that weren't commensurate with what their training was and their, and their, and their skill sets. So right now, because we have, um, the additional benefits for unemployment, we didn't see a, a re-expansion in that gap between unemployment and underemployment. So that was a, that was an interesting observation to see whether that will continue, uh, you know, as, as some of those benefits run out over the course of the fall. Maybe they'll get reintroduced, maybe they'll get reintroduced after the election, uh, et cetera. It'll be interesting to watch that. One more thing that I wanted to show you here is just the actual devastation, uh, again to the economy. This is gross domestic product. We, we've heard about GDP forever, right? It's usually going plus or minus five percent, plus or minus five percent. In the second quarter, it was down almost thirty-three percent gross domestic product. So, again, you, you run that, you run this chart going back in history, I think you'll go all the way back to nineteen forty-six before you'd see anything, uh, of a comparable size of, of a, of a single quarter adjustment like that. So just things to keep in mind as we're talking about the, the difficulties. In our world, there is a huge picture out there that is really, uh, really experiencing a, a lot of difficulty and, and that will come to bear to us in some, in some ways, uh, as we move forward. So those are a couple of things that I just wanted to draw your attention to.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah.
Um, in the Calla Trust piece, the, uh, Fed fund rate is basically at zero. Has, have you put any consideration into any of our financial instruments? Is it time to refinance anything?
You know, we have been looking at whether we need, would, would be able to, uh, refinance any of our certificates of participation. So that's what I think you would be referring to is that what we do our, our finance, capital financing with. So again, instead of bonds, uh, which are debt instruments and go, uh, we use these certificate of participation, which are revenue instruments technically, they still carry a yield, uh, they, they, they are designed similarly and performed similarly to bonds, but again, different instruments. All that prelude to say, yes, we're looking at that, but we have not seen the opportunity yet, uh, to move, because really, a lot of our COPs are, are really fairly new issues and there's usually this window, the kind of this, uh, uh, time where you, you're not able to refinance. You have to get through the first few years of an issue first before it becomes eligible for refinancing. And so for the most part, we haven't even hit that window yet. And for the ones that are, are older, the, uh, they, they just haven't seen, there's just not a big enough return calculation, uh, on it to make it worthwhile just yet. But it may come, especially as we look forward to hopefully building a middle school and stuff like that. We may be able to put some things together and put together a larger issue, uh, where we can leverage that.
Thanks.
No further questions.
We'll move on to, uh, chief operations officer.
At the beginning of the meeting, I gave a quick update on where we sat for COVID preparation and getting our students back in the schools and support on the operations side, and that's a big chunk of what's in the operations update. The only additional point that I will make is, uh, as tied into what Brett was just mentioning here a moment ago with the capital planning, uh, and project planning, is that we are taking a hard look at our capital list for this year and tracking and, and, and starting to consider if we find ourselves needing to make some, some reductions, where that would need to take place. A lot of capital projects have already started because they needed to. Um, but we have a, we have, we have a, a good sized list and we'll continue to look at that very critically, uh, in conjunction with the business office as we move forward. Uh, other than that, everything else, uh, speaks for itself in the document and I'll stand by for any questions.
And the capital process was described in Mr. Ridgeway's presentation. So if you have any questions on how things are determined and how we prioritize them and go in order, do read that and contact Brett, uh, you know, on, you know, on those issues. Any questions for operations? Okay, moving on, we are on to the proposed District 49 resolutions for Colorado Association of School Boards. And this is, if we look at what has been approved as of last year, there were five District 49 resolutions. I plan, and if you've read them, there's, uh, I plan on, um, recommending that we continue Resolution one, two, four, and five. I do not, uh, call for continuing Resolution three, which is reallocate state revenue from marijuana retail sales to school districts for unfunded special education student spends. It was not, uh, it, it will never win. There are too many school districts that says, just give us the money and we'll spend that how we want. But one, two, four, and five are still, uh, sound. The reasonings are in the document. And we must update that by close of business September tenth. So what I'm looking for is, is consensus to forward one, two, four, and five to Casby as resolutions recommended by District 49.
Yeah, I agree with John in keeping fighting for that number of, the, the marijuana one is really futile, so it probably discounts us on the other issues. I appreciate your wisdom in that.
Thank you. Dave?
Yeah.
Concur. John?
Um, I don't know if I could support number five. Moving violations are issued to people, not cars, so I...
The cap, the cameras are basically used as evidence and right now the state does not allow us to do that.
Are you saying the cameras are already capturing the video?
Some buses are fitted with cameras, not all, but we want, we don't wanna, we don't want Casby to stand in the way of state legislation that's, that removes the obstacles to allowing cameras on buses to record information that is then passed on to sheriff departments and police departments to stop people screaming past buses when they're stopped and kids are loading.
The only reason, I once got a ticket for two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for my car passing a school bus with a stop arm. I was at work at the time. Somebody had borrowed my car, I got the ticket in the mail, I spent, I spent months fighting that ticket, so...
Well, what you should have done is just said, this is the person that I loaned the car to, that blew past and you put kids at risk.
I'm just...
If you don't, you could say yea or nay.
I say nay to five, but...
Okay, Rick?
I'm, I'm good with your recommendation, actually.
And I'm good, so motion passes. I will present, uh, one, two, three, uh, I mean, four and five to Casby. And, uh, now we're on to, uh, Chief Operations Officer Annual Performance Assessment Report.
Pedro Almeida, Chief Operations Officer. Appreciate the board taking the time to, uh, review the supporting documents that I have in the packet. Uh, I'm just gonna hit a couple of key points, uh, real quick. Uh, I'm not gonna go through all of the supporting documents in the packet, uh, because it's, it'll take more time than I think any of us really, really wanna take here. Um, there are four documents that are in the, in the board docs that are, that are available to yourselves and to the public. One is the, uh, supporting narrative, uh, which kind of gives a synopsis of some of the things that, uh, occurred over, over the year. Uh, the second one is the three-hundred-and-sixty-degree, uh, rating results and for the general public, that is a survey that we give to, uh, peers and to folks who work directly for us, as well as to other colleagues within the, within the, uh, within the staff to go ahead and rate, uh, individuals. And in my case, I received a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree rating report. There is a, uh, it's okay, Dave, we don't need to pull them up, thanks. Uh, on the, uh, the, uh, third document is a, um, is an analysis of that report. In other words, some of the things that I took away from reading the results of, of the, of the, of the survey. And the last one is just a general data sheet of, uh, operations information, just to give you some perspective on, on the operations department. Uh, four quick points that I'll make and then I'll, I'll open up for any questions. The first one is that in, in general, I really appreciate the feedback and the time The first one is that in general, I really appreciate the feedback and the time that was taken on the part of the District 49 staff members to provide me feedback in the 360 report. I've taken a look at that, and there's definitely some points that I'll use and help inform me in terms of my approach and my leadership within the department. Second point I'll make is that a lot of great things happened in the operations department over the past year, and I owe a tremendous amount of credit in this district, and this community owes a tremendous amount of credit to all of those operations leaders and the workforce that is within the department because they made stuff happen. The third, I just want to very quickly recap a couple of major accomplishments that took place over the past year that I'll highlight. The first is the supervision of the spring studio expansion project and the completion of that project and the execution of it. The second one is the IT contract that was, that pretty much took place over the span of the last 12 months, from a request for proposals to taking bids from a number of potential vendors, to the actual awarding of the vendor contract, to the transition from CCS to Sentinel. And Sentinel is on the ground now as our vendor. And that was a very significant effort on the part of the district and has a lot of effects across the board in many, many areas. And the third one that I'll point out is a lot of step, a lot of things that have been improved in the area of security across the district, starting with the creation of and the manning of the armed security positions. And the fourth point I'll make is, as we look at where we are right now, we need to make sure that we are understanding that everything that's operating within the district in all of the departments has been significantly disrupted by COVID, which Mr. Ridgeway just laid out very clearly, one of the aspects too, when he talked about the economic disruption that's taken place. And that has been the dominant topic for half of, pretty much half of this evaluation period for myself and for the other chief officers that'll follow behind me. And that is a, that has had its impact for sure. There are definitely some areas of strategic work that we did not get to, that I want to get to within the operations office in terms of strategic planning and implementation. And some of those things were definitely taken off track by the near-term requirements. The budget impacts have had impacts on some of the things that we want to do in terms of improving the operations department. In particular, we start talking about structure, personnel, the right number of folks. There are a number of things that we simply put on hold because we're in the position that we are right now in the COVID world. And the last piece is that we need to clearly understand that the work that the operations teams, the leaders, and all of the folks within have had, and in particular in the areas of facilities, transportation, and nutrition services, with all of the significant disruption that's taken place over the span of the last six months, it continues right now. We've also had significant impacts in the work that's being done in information technology, as well as in safety and security. But those three departments in particular, facilities, nutrition services, and transportation, a lot of great work being done by the leaders and by the folks in that department as they continue to adjust to the requirements for the district. With all those points said, I will stop there and take any questions or any comments from the board on the evaluation packet.
Gentlemen, any questions, any concerns? At this point, we're just, you know, asking questions that clarify performance, clarify data, so that you can inform your appraisal. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And what I say to our newest members of the board, because this is the first time you're going through this process. So if you have questions about what a multi-rater, you know, means, or what this means, or what that means, feel free individually to ask me those questions about the process. I can clarify it for you, or Donna can, or even the chief operations officer can. But don't go into the process blind and then, you know. These inputs are due to Ms. Garza Monday. Today's Thursday, they're due Monday. So on August 31st, before she goes home for the day, we need every board member to provide input in the appropriate form, which we should already have in our end boxes. So thank you.
Is that the end of day on the 31st?
Say again.
End of day 31st?
End of her day.
4:00 P.M.?
Yes, end of her day.
End of her day, yeah.
Now, your day, her day.
Okay.
Day by 4 o'clock, 4:00 P.M. Because what she'll do is she'll tally them, put them all together, okay? And then at September 10th, I believe, we talk about them in the executive session. Okay? Any further questions?
I didn't try it.
Okay, as far as I am concerned, it's 9:01.